But I was thinking, you know, the borough says we, we, the people want this job. So the borough hands this job out to an engineering company and they, they come back and how much was the engineering? I'm sure it was a couple hundred thousand bucks or something. And, and now where you're going to go, oh, now that we have that, now we're going to put it out to another company to manage it. And then, of course, another company to do the project. I, I, I think that we should look into, uh, having some more of that capabilities at the borough to actually be able to manage a project. And, uh, yeah. So I, 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 I think that I'm not in favor. I think we should, we should have that in-house to be able to manage a job.
Okay. Mike, go ahead.
So through the mayor to the assembly, I, I, I wanted to add a couple of points. First, uh, first thing with this project is this has a connection to DOT right away. So whenever you go in and, and actually construct something in the DOT right away, their, their conditions or requirements for construction management and just how that's done in general is, I'll just say it's a, I'll be, I'll be kind and say it's a little bit different than how we do it. So thi- this particular project has a traffic signal, which is not something that's common. So the extent of oversight required is going to be a little bit different than our standard project. To, uh, to Mr. Two's point, I believe we do do construction management and oversight for the road projects that we have, the RSA funding. But you have to keep in mind too, when we talk about hiring permanent staff, the capital funding that we have for these larger road projects comes and goes. We haven't had a successful road ballot since 2011. 2011 was the last time a ballot got passed that actually got fully executed in that early 2010 time, or 2010, 2015 timeframe. There were subsequent ballots passed, but they never got fully matched. So this idea that we would have permanent staff on, y- you know, when the capital's ebbing and flowing probably isn't the best technique moving forward unless we had a sustainable funding mechanism that would allow us to kind of have, you know, some flat programming in terms of the amount of projects that we would have year to year. Right now, we have an approved ballot that in three to five years, there's no future larger capital work in the queue. So I, I think that's one of the challenges. I would love to see something sustainable where we could continue to build projects like this. This one's a little bit different with Felton because it involves the city of Palmer. It involves the Department of Transportation and it involves us. So the construction management and the oversight, because we're going to hand the maintenance for this facility off to the city of Palmer. So I do think having some, uh, a pretty good construction management set makes sense because we're talking about transferring work that the borough is responsible for to another entity to maintain. So just a couple of things to consider as we have this discussion. If, if the assembly wants us to go do a workup for engineering staff, we can certainly do that, but it's not just PEs with the ability to put a stamp on a document. If you're talking about engineering, you've got to be able to draft and, and do all these other things, all these support that these engineering firms already have on tap. I'm perfectly willing to go out and look at that if that's what we want to do. I'm just not sure where we're going to be in three to five years when work maybe starts to dry up again, or there's a, you know, it kind of tapers off for a period and then we have these full-time employees on staff. So just, just a couple of things to consider with regards to that.
Further discussion?
Yes, I, I, I appreciate your answers there, Mike. And I guess I, I'll just ask that we have more discussions in the near future.
Okay. Deputy, okay. Further discussion?
Yeah, I'm just thinking of what Moki just said. So for this particular project, I think after having heard your explanation, Mike, probably makes sense, but it just seems like we, so maybe as Moki says, maybe talk about this other thing about maybe an architect, a couple of engineers that could just float through the whole thing. If we're talking about the valley growing like crazy and it is, and it probably will, I don't see it slowing down, but for this particular project, perhaps you're right.
Okay. Further discussion? Any objection to the approval of AM 22 dash zero three three?
I object.
Okay. All righty, go ahead then. We're ready to vote.
Get people in the room to go ahead and vote. Assemblymember Yount?
Yes.
Assemblymember Two?
No.
Assemblymember Bernier? Assemblymember Bernier?
Yes.
Thank you. It passed with Assemblymember Two opposed.
Okay.
We're now at unfinished business.
Okay.
Ordinance 22 zero two nine and ordinance submitting MSB 3.15037 to provide for an additional residential real property tax exemption of 114,000 of the assessed value of real property owned and occupied as a permanent abode by a resident who is 65 years of age or older, a disabled veteran, or a person at least 60 years old who is a widow or widower of a person who was qualified for the exemption, providing for an annual adjustment and submitting the question to the qualified voters at the next regular, regular or special election.
Deputy Mayor?
Madam Mayor, what we're on right now is we have a pending amendment. It's in everybody's red folder. So that is exactly where we're at right now is, would you like me to read it into the record?
Sure.
Assemblymember Sumner moved a primary amendment by inserting the words less the percentage of the increase of social security payments after the words to the current year to read such adjustment is the percent change from the prior to the current year less the percentage of the increase of social security payments.
Okay, the discussion now is on that amendment. Yes, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, so on further consideration, I'm not sure that this specific amendment would be the best thing to do on this. It might even just add more uncertainty to what the exemption would be each year. So I, I'd probably recommend voting against this amendment.
Okay. Further discussion on the amendment? I guess there is an objection then to passing the amendment, so we'll need to vote then.
If I can get everybody in the room to go ahead and vote.
What are we exactly voting on?
His amendment and he would like to pull his amendment, but that's not possible is what I understand, right? It's...
I get that.
Madam Mayor, he could withdraw it.
Right.
But he didn't do that. So he just said he recommended people vote it down.
Correct.
Was the maker of the amendments vote recommending people vote it down?
I hear, yes, thank you.
You've got it. Okay, great.
Assemblymember Two?
Uh, voted down is no. I don't know.
Exactly. Thank you. Assemblymember Bernier?
No.
Assemblymember Yount?
No.
It failed unanimously.
Okay. And then I, let's see, we have some further amendments, I think. Deputy Mayor?
Uh, Madam Mayor, I move to amend the ballot language to read as follows. Increasing this title, increasing the senior and disabled residential owner occupied property optional tax exemption from 68,000 to 114,000 of assessed value for the total exemption of 264,000. Um, the Matt Newska City Borough currently provides an optional real property tax exemption of 68,000 of assessed value that exceeds 150,000 of assessed value of real property owned and occupied as a permanent place of abode, a resident who is, one, 65 years of age or older, two, a disabled veteran, including a person who is disabled in the line of duty while serving in the Alaska Territorial Guard, or three, at least 60 years old, and a widow or widower of a person who is qualified for an exemption. This exemption applies in addition to any other exemption applicable to the property. Currently, the total of the exemptions is 218,000. Uh, in the question, the Matt, the Matt Newska City Borough proposes to increase the optional exemption from 68,000 to 114,000 for a total exemption of 264,000 and provide that the exemption will be adjusted annually based upon the percentage change in the federal housing price index. Should this ordinance become law? And it's yes or no?
Okay.
And this is just a, this is a ballot language amendment and not to the substance of the actual ordinance.
Okay. Assemblyperson Nowers, do we even speak?
Yeah, I have a secondary amendment to that. And I will pass this to the clerk, so you'll, you'll have it. Yeah.
Point of, point of order. So does a secondary amendment have to be applicable in some way to the primary amendment? Because...
Through the mayor to Assemblymember Sumner, the secondary amendment has to amend the primary amendment. So it would have to amend what was just read into the record.
So I think appropriately, the amendment that...
No, I'm doing just something different.
Oh, okay.
So this is to amend the language that Assemblymember Sumner just said into the record. So for the title, it would add, it would say, increasing the Mattsu Borough's senior disabled veteran residential owner occupied property optional tax exemption. So it's just inserting Mattsu Boroughs and instead of just saying disabled, it says disabled veteran. And then in the first sentence, it would read, the Mattsu Borough currently provides an optional real property tax exemption of 68,000 of assessed value that is, this is where the change is, that is in addition to the state required exemption of 150,000 of assessed value on real property owned and occupied as a permanent place of abode by a resident, or there's missing a word there, by, who is, and then the rest stays the same. So it, and I, I'm just offering that because I think it clarifies and I can pass it to the clerk if she can read my chicken scratch.
Okay. Do you want to speak? Besides just clarifying, did you have further discussion?
It just, the primary goal is to clarify for voters what is attempted by the, the ballot language in front of them and what exists now.
Okay. Is any of the assembly people want the clerk to read it, or is everybody understand what the amendment is? Is, I don't see any discussion. Is there any objection? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Can you have the clerk read it, please?
Sure.
This is Ron.
Yeah, try. You'll have to correct me if I read it wrong, Assemblyperson Nowers. In the title, the title is inserting the word Mattsu Boroughs and, and veteran, or Mattsu Boroughs and veteran, it would read, increasing the Mattsu Borough senior disabled veteran residential owner occupied property option, optional tax exemption from 68,000 to 114,000 of the assessed value for a total exemption of 264,000. The first sentence will now read, the Mattnewska City Borough currently provides an optional real property tax exemption of 68,000 of assessed value that is in addition to the state 150,000 required exemption of assessed value of real property owned and occupied as a permanent place of abode by a resident. Did I read it wrong?
This whole part goes before 50,000.
Oh, oh, sorry. I'll read that one more time. The Mattnewska City Borough currently provides an optional real property tax exemption of 68,000 of assessed value. That is not, that is, sorry, that is in addition to the state required exemption of 150,000 of assessed value of real property owned and occupied as a permanent place of abode by a resident. So those would be the only changes, how they would read.
Okay. Uh, you've heard the amendment to the, well, it's the secondary amendment. So is there further discussion or questions about the secondary amendment? Is there any objection? Okay, hearing none. Then before you, you have the primary amendment as amended. Yes, Deputy Mayor?
So I guess, I, I think that last by should actually be an of on, so, uh, I guess, I guess that's not important. The clerk could probably clear, clear that language up, but...
Yeah. If you're saying about the, the last amendment?
Yeah.
It's, it would read abode by a resident. As a permanent place of abode by a resident. Who is 65 years of age or older.
150,000 assessed value of a real property owned and occupied as a permanent place of abode by a resident? I think it, it would be permanent place of abode of a resident.
Okay. Good, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
We're on the primary amendment.
Okay. Further discussion on the primary amendment? Is there any objection to the primary amendment as amended? Hearing no objections, then that has been passed also. So now we have ordinance 22 dash zero two nine as amended. Are there some further amendments? Yes, Assemblyperson Nowers?
Madam Mayor, and I will pass this to the clerk. I have an amendment that would remove all references to the annual adjustment to this exemption. So in other words, it would raise the amount, if approved by voters, to 264,000, but it would remove all references to tying it to the housing price index. And the clerk can guide me if I, I probably need to read this into the record. I move to amend ordinance 22 dash zero two nine to remove all references to an annual adjustment to the exemption in the title, ordinance, and ballot language. On page one of the ordinance, delete the words, providing for an annual adjustment from the title. Page two of the ordinance, delete the 10th, 11th, and 12th whereas clauses. Page four of the ordinance, delete the words, adjusted annually as provided in subsection D of this section. Page five of the ordinance, delete subsection D. Page six of the ordinance, delete the words, and will be adjusted annually based upon the percentage change in the federal housing price index from the ballot language. And I'd like to speak to this amendment.
Uh huh, sure, go ahead.
I'd sent out, if folks had a chance to look at it, some of the history on the senior citizen disabled vet exemption and the growth in it. I think it's a good program, but I think the goal of it is to keep seniors and disabled vets from losing their homes. And we might be actually making it more difficult for families who are struggling, who are not seniors or disabled vets, to, to make it here in the borough and giving a break to some seniors and disabled vets that maybe are not in the position of losing their homes. So you can see the exponential growth in this program compared to our population. There's been an 89, almost doubling of the number of people applying for exemption in the last two years. And I, I had a typo. It's more of about a 200% increase in the value of exempt property, and that's at a time when our population has only increased by 16%. So it isn't a freebie. The cost this is being borne by the taxpayers that aren't getting the exemption. And it's become an increasing portion of the budget. So I think it is up to voters whether to approve this increase to 264,000, but the, the financial impact of tying it to an escalator every year when it's already exponentially increasing, I think it's just prudent of us and takes into account the other taxpayers are footing the bill. Because right now, the tax essentially on the rest of the population to make up the uncollected tax revenue is about $600. It's about two mils. So I just, I think raising the exemption and putting that to the voters is okay, but I think in the interest of trying to keep this program from eating our budget and causing us to raise taxes on the rest of the population or raise, or keep the property tax high, that we should remove tying it to the housing price index. Oh, and I'm sorry, one other piece of information. I did ask the assessor for how many of the homes that are receiving this exemption are valued at over 400,000. And I just, it's a random number, but I figured a $400,000 home is a pretty nice home. So of the senior disabled vets, of about 1,800 folks who are getting, I'm sorry, of disabled veterans, about 1,800 are getting the exemption, almost a third of those are over $400,000. And then if you look at seniors, there's about 7,400 seniors that are getting exemption, about 1,400 of those are over 400,000. So I kind of come back to, again, to what we're trying to accomplish, which is keep seniors and disabled vets in their, their home and, and being prudent about who's footing the bill for the exemption that we're giving.
Further discussion on, yes, Assemblyperson Hale?
Yeah, I... Thank you, Madam Mayor. So one of the things that I really actually liked about this ordinance was the tying it to the, tying it to the index so that it would auto inflation-proof itself. But one of the things that was brought up to me at a, a community council meeting, Buick Community Council meeting, was that if there's a correction in the housing market, I think we can all agree that we're kind of in a bit of a bubble right now, but if there's a correction in the housing market, this, the exemption would then drop as, along with the, uh, along with the housing price index, which, you know, would be a good thing if it didn't drop too far, but one of the persons there who benefits from this exemption said, what would the floor be then? You know, if, if the bottom dropped out of the market, what would the floor for the exemption be if it was tied to this thing? And I said, well, I, I imagine, you know, it'd be $150,000 because that's what we're required by the state to provide. And they said, well, you know, it'd be nice if the floor was higher than that. We, you know, we don't want to, they, you know, if, if the market absolutely crashes, then they would be, you know, their, their exemption would drop considerably. And so they were very concerned about that. So that's just something to think about when we're talking about whether we should tie this to the index or not.
Okay. Assemblyperson Yacht, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to clarify a couple of things. We are way overcomplicating this. The program has grown, as spoken previously, but it's not growing per individual person. It's only grown because our senior population, the disabled veteran population has grown. When, in actuality, since the last assembly adopted this nine years ago, each person's individual value in the deduction has shrank yearly based on inflation. And so going back to when Moki and I originally started this, we took the previous number and we looked at that and, and really felt like what the previous assembly had adopted nine, 10 years ago was a very fair amount, and all we did was adjust that for inflation. We respected the will of the previous assembly, like I said, and the previous voters, and we went back to that number. We, the reason I believe it should be adjusted for inflation, it's, it's, and this is all relative, yes, it, it could. I would debate that we're in a housing bubble. I don't think we are, but that's neither here nor there, not in the Mattsu Borough anyway, because of the growth that we've seen and will continue to see. But let's just say that it did drop substantially, as too with the values by the assessors. So as too with their property taxes. So it's really relative when you speak about it from those terms. Again, I, I'd like to just simplify things and go back to the root cause of this. Yes, it has grown, the program has, but it's not growing for individual people. And these individual seniors and disabled vets, they're on fixed incomes for the most part, actually, they pretty much all are. And their fixed incomes are growing at a substantially slower rate than costs in general and inflation in general. And I, I really feel like if there's anything we should help inflation-proof for, it's this. I don't, I don't know. I can't support this amendment for that very reason. This is a very simple process. It goes back to what was adopted in 13, and it just sets it to inflation. And like I said, if, if the cost of housing comes down, I don't think that the seniors and disabled vets are going to be upset if their, if their adjustment goes down when obviously their assessment will go down as well. So I, I cannot support this amendment. Thank you.
Further discussion on the amendment? Okay. Stephanie, did you, Assemblyperson Nowers?
Just a, just a quick response. I also don't think the, the, the cost of housing is going to go down. It might stabilize for what it's worth. But I also just, you know, if we, if the voters pass this, there's no way to roll this back. That's what I'm thinking about. You know, once this is in, there's no way it's going to get rolled back. So there's no appetite, I don't think, at the assembly or the borough level to do a need-based program. That's the other thing I've heard, because that's the goal. We want to keep seniors and disabled vets from losing their home, but we, a need-based program would be overly bureaucratic. So given that, and given that, you know, there's a portion of these folks who are getting the break that if, they're not on the, the fixed income, I just think to, you know, we can always come back and amend it again. We could come back next year and amend it again. If we're having a bunch of seniors getting kicked out of homes, we can come back and do that, but if we bake this in now, that's never going to come out. So that's why I'm recommending that we take it out now and, and then we can come back and adjust it again in the future.
Further discussion on the amendment? Is there, oh, yes. Assemblyperson McKee, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, as we've said before, somebody that lives in a $400,000 house probably doesn't need the assistance of a family with three or four kids who don't get the break. I just don't like, and, and I, this, this amendment would apply, this thing would apply to me, but I'm not for it because I don't think that I should be moving forward on the backs of somebody who hasn't acquired what I've acquired in my lifetime. And that's just the way I personally feel. The amendment's fine, but in the final analysis for the, for the ordinance itself, or the resolution, or whatever you call that thing, I'm not for it.
Okay, thank you. So is there any objection to the amendment? The...
I'd like to clarify one more thing, if I may. This is Assemblymember Yacht.
Go ahead.
So if, if the legislation as a whole passes and increases from two 18 to two 64, I believe it was, I, I want everybody to know and understand that this is going to cost us approximately, there's no exact science of this, this is approximate numbers, but 2.9 million dollars in the yearly budget moving forward. And so I also want to clear, that's a, that's a lot of money. It really is. But I want to put it in perspective as to what it is for our budget. So of our budgeted expenditures per year of 347 million dollars in the Mattsu Borough, this is 0.8357%. So, uh, you know, I'll err on the side of caution here and round this up to 0.84% of the budget. I, like I said, I, I think this is the least we can do for, you know, for our seniors and disabled veterans. It's, it's not going to break the bank, I assure you. You know, we move hundreds of thousands around all the time on things that I, I assure you, you know, don't have near the positive impact that this is going to be. So I'll leave it at that. 0.84% is rounded up. Thank you.
Okay. Deputy Mayor? And let's try to talk just about the amendment, please. Okay, because that's where we are. We're not on the main motion yet, right?
Correct.
Okay. Yes. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just, a couple more numbers for you. So we, we bring in about 100 million in property tax revenue. If we pass this and it's 3 million...
I am, I'm going to call you out, or like I did the deputy mayor...
Well, I would say $100.
That's not pertaining to the amendment.
Fair enough, fair enough.
I will take it when we get to the mo, to the main motion. Okay. All righty, and we do have an objection to the amendment, so Madam Clerk, if you would have people vote, please.
If I can get the people in the room to go ahead and vote on the amendment? Assemblymember Bernier?
No.
Assemblymember Yount?
No.
Assemblymember Two?
No.
It passed with Assemblymember Bernier, Yount, and Two opposed. It passed with Assemblymember Bernier, Yunt, and Tu opposed.
Now we're back to the main motion as amended. Is there any further amendments? Okay.
This is the very last one. So at the end of the ballot language, I would add a sentence that says, "The added estimated cost of this exemption in the first year is approximately 2.9 million," and I'd like to just briefly speak to that, the reasoning. Again, it's just to make it clear for voters, um, what they're voting on and the implications of it, and that there is a, a cost, and those could be made up with cuts to the borough budget, or they could be made up with revenue that we bring in.
Deputy Mayor, did you have your hand up, or are you thinking, or?
I wanted to speak to the amendment. So the 2.9 million dollars, I don't know that that makes it more clear, uh, it's not particularly accurate, because that number that was quoted by the Finance Director applies only to the area-wide revenue that's lost, it does not apply to the non-area-wide, the fire service or the road service. And, yeah, and then I had some other comments in that regard, but I don't think they're applicable directly to the amendment.
Okay. Further discussion, Assemblyperson Hale, and then I'll, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, so, one quick question for the Finance Director, uh, 2.9 million dollars, um, that is, uh, .3 mils in the area-wide, is that correct?
Through the Mayor, Assemblymember Hale, yes, that is pretty close.
So I, I would like to offer a secondary amendment to this. So at the end, after 2.9 million, um, I would like to add, or 0.3 mils in the area-wide property tax rate.
It would read, "The estimated cost of this exemption in the first year is approximately 2.9 million and 0.4..."
Comma, or.
Oh, comma, or. Comma, or .043 mils in the...
0.3.
.3 mils in the area-wide tax rate.
Is that correct? Okay. Now we'll have to have, uh, the discussion just on that amendment. So, discussion on that amendment. Yes, Deputy Mayor.
So I, I worry that that makes it even less accurate, or rather more, potentially more deceptive, because, um, it, it isn't just .3 of the area-wide, and if we're leading people to believe that it impacts only .3 mil of the area-wide, uh, that's very inaccurate, because it would also impact some, some, uh, mil rate of their fire service, their road service, their non-area-wide, if they're outside the cities. And, uh, that, I mean, maybe the attorney could speak to this, but that might actually open us up to litigation. Should, should then, the, the assembly debate and decide because of, and somebody says it, in, in an assembly debate, that we must raise somebody's fire service because now we have this exemption, and then we do, and they went and voted on it and thought that it would only apply to the area-wide, that might be problematic.
Go ahead, sir.
So to clarify, this amendment was written for Assemblymember Nours before the prior meeting, where the Finance Officer explained that this, that the 2.9 million dollars was the area-wide only. The solution then would be to work, to insert a different word that said, "The estimated cost of this exemption..."
Sir, 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 can I take you to the amendment that...
Yep.
Uh, Assemblyperson Hale put, "That's what we're talking about now," is that part, that's his amendment to the original amendment, which the clerk...
I think Assemblymember Sumner's point is, is that the secondary amendment that's currently on the floor does not provide clarification that this estimate is only applicable to the area-wide rate. That doesn't mean a further amendment can't do that, but I think that's his point now, and I would tend to agree.
Okay. Assemblyperson Hale?
Yeah, so I was kind of trying to address the concern he had had earlier with the, uh, primary amendment, with this secondary amendment by, you know, specifying that the estimated cost that we're talking about is in the area-wide mil rate, but if there's a better way to phrase it, I'm absolutely open to any and all suggestions.
Okay. So were you coming up with something better, sir?
Would you like me to?
Deputy, Deputy Mayor, go ahead.
So, I, I don't have wording, but, um, I, I do just worry that the secondary amendment almost reinforces the potential, you know, belief of people reading the thing, that it only applies to the area-wide, but that, that is not the case, so we should probably clarify that.
Do you want to just take a couple-minute break to come up with some language real quick?
Okay. So I need, first of all, need, um, a motion to extend the meeting past 10 o'clock.
Madam Mayor, I move to extend the meeting to 11:00 PM.
Okay. Discussion? Any objection to extending the meeting until 11? Hearing none, then we are extended until 11. And now we are back on the secondary amendment, and does somebody have some language to? Nick working on it?
I almost certainly can. The, the thing the assembly needs to decide is, are you, are you concerned that voters are going to be worried that by putting in this estimate, that voters are going to be thinking, "Oh, this only applies to the area-wide rate"? Or are you concerned that when you're given this 2.9 estimate, that voters think, "Oh, that's the total cost"? Because you could say, "The estimated cost of this exemption in the first year exceeds 2.9 million." Because if the 2.9 million is the area-wide rate impact, the estimated cost will certainly exceed that. And so, and you, 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 you take off the word "approximately" and you insert the word "exceeds."
Yes, Assemblyperson Hale?
Yeah, so, that is, that's definitely a way that we could approach that. I think we probably, um, I, I don't know, can I change my amendment? Is that a legal maneuver, or?
Can he withdraw?
He can withdraw his amendment and make a new one, yes.
Okay. So I would like to withdraw my amendment and make a, a new secondary amendment.
Make sure there's no objection.
Any objection to him rem, uh, withdrawing his amendment? Okay, all right, go ahead, sir.
Then I would make the new secondary amendment, "The estimated cost of this exemption in the first year exceeds 2.9 million, comma, uh, what did I say before?"
Oh, I scratched it out.
I thought you withdrew that. Didn't you, withdrew the, what you said before?
Right, but I had to put that exceeds in there, so, uh, so it'd be comma, or .3 mils in the area-wide.
We're right back to the area-wide.
Right, but I had to put that exceeds in there instead of approximately, strike approximately, strike is approximately, and put in exceeds in its place.
We don't know that for sure. Mr.?
Right?
But, again, if the assembly as a body is concerned that you're addressing the area-wide mil rate only, you, one of the things you don't want to do with ballot language is get too, too terribly wordy. You want to be concise and to the point. Providing an estimate is certainly something that if the body feels that that's appropriate, that you can do. What you want to stay away from is saying, "Well, it exceeds .3 mils area-wide, but it has an unknown effect on," or, or there, there is no estimate as to all other mil rates. You'd have to then insert those types of words once you start calling out specific fund rates. So you could just say, "Exceeds 2.9 million," period, because that is the impact across all tax rates, because it's area-wide, it's 2.9 million, but we know there will be a, a positive number impact on non-area-wide service area. Most people have two service areas, road and fire, some people have three, some people have four. Some people have zero, then it's just area-wide and non-area-wide. So I think you're safe to say, "Exceeds 2.9 million."
I, I guess the intent of my secondary amendment was to let people know how this would affect their, how this 2.9 million, which is really kind of a abstract number, um, how that would actually impact the mil rate that they're actually paying taxes on, I guess, was the, the, kind of the intent that I was trying to reach with the, with throwing in the mil rate that that number, that 2.9 million represents. Uh, maybe, maybe that's a bridge too far, I don't know.
Where are you at, sir?
So I'll just, I will just withdraw my secondary amendment entirely, and, uh, and, we can consider the primary.
Okay.
Any objection to withdrawing?
Any objection for him to withdraw? Okay, so we're back to the primary amendment. The 2.9, yeah, yeah, we're back to that.
Thank you, I just appreciate that discussion. I think the goal, again, is just to give voters an idea of the approximate cost that might be there, and it is an estimate, um, and, um, without bogging down the, the language anymore, um, and if they want to dig into the details, they could dig into it. So I, I think that's a good way to do it, even though it's not perfect, um, it doesn't imply something that we don't want it to imply.
Deputy Mayor?
Well, approximately 2.9 almost implies that it could be above or below, and we fairly certainly know it's only above. So it exceeds might be more appropriate in that case, because you're, you're, by saying "approximately," you're implying that we have some uncertainty whether, you know, that it's around that range, but it may be above or below, but it is only above. I don't remember what word it was, so. So I, I, I'd move to change, a secondary amendment to change approximately to exceeds.
Discussion on the exceeds. Let me, let me throw something out here. What if the housing bubble pops July 1st of this year? Property values drop 30%. Oil prices go down to, right? No way then that, that it is going to exceed 2.9. I mean, you, we're thinking about that we're going to continue on this same escalating thing. For those of us that lived through the 80s, you know, there goes a person there, myself, you know, in six months, you know? So I mean, we need, if, if you, when you're doing this negotiation, you need to think of both the plus and the minus, okay? So that's what I'm saying. Okay. All righty, yeah. Assemblyperson McKee.
I'm getting kind of confused at where we are with the Roberts Rule of Order and all that sort of thing, but I think it's something that would solve the whole thing, Stephanie alluded to it, but in a negative way. It ought to be needs-based. If I make a million bucks a year, I don't need this exemption. I don't care about housing bubbles, but if I, if I need it, then why, why isn't there some process that we could go through that a person who does truly need it gets it, but a person, and yet it may, maybe take a little more work between Christmas. Somebody who makes a million bucks a year doesn't need any of this.
Yeah, we're on the word exceeds in...
I'm sorry, oh, I, oh, okay.
Yeah. We're back. He tried the word exceeds, it didn't work, so now we're down the other end of the table trying the word exceeds.
I'll, 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 I'll wait, I'll repeat.
This is, this is Assemblymember Yott.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
I'd like to call the question.
Yeah, on the amendment.
On the amendment.
Yeah.
Okay, so the question's been called. Is there objection to the question being called?
I object.
Assemblymember Yott, you're objecting to calling the question. Do you object to calling the question?
No.
Thank you.
No, I'm sorry.
Maybe we should reconsider the motion about going past 10 o'clock. All righty, is there objection to calling the question? No, this is, yeah, on the, on the secondary amendment. Yeah, on the word exceeds. Okay, so.
Secondary passed, am I hearing that?
No, we haven't voted on the secondary pass, we just voted on any objection to calling the question. So now we're to voting on the word exceeds.
Any objection?
Is there any objection to the word exceeds?
I object.
Okay.
I can get the members in the room to vote. Assemblymember Yunt?
No.
Assemblymember Tu?
No.
Assemblymember Bernier? It passed with Assemblymember Yunt, Tu, and Bernier in, in support. Now we're on the primary amendment.
Okay. Um, any further discussion on the, yes, Assemblyperson, no? Okay. Assemblyperson Yott?
I just want to respond to the mayor's comment. I think it's true the market could drop out, but people are going to be voting on this in July, and I don't think the market's going to drop out by July, and we're just giving them our best guess, so that, that's how I'm kind of viewing it and trying to educate them, even though it's, hopefully we won't go back to the 80s.
Right. Well, the thing is, though, yeah, they're going to vote in July, but the assessments are going to be done after that or doing it now, and if it, market is dropped by what January 1st would be of next year. Yeah, so, anyway, yes, Deputy Mayor, go ahead.
Well, to, to that point, I would say that, that there are places in the Matsu Borough where the RSA, FSA, non-area-wide and all that add up to, oh, uh, almost as much as the, the, the area-wide. I think, uh, Point Mc, uh, Point McKenzie, RSA, it was pretty expensive, yeah. So, I mean, you, you might have to have a 50% or more down correction in order for those to not then exceed, um, so, I mean, I, I, while there may be a correction, I don't think that much of a correction is, is likely, or, or even, I mean, that's a tail risk that is so improbable that I, I don't think it would justify not, not putting the word exceed in there.
Further discussion, Assemblyperson Hale?
I would like to call the question on the amendment, please.
Okay. Any objection to calling the question on the amendment? Okay, um, so now we will vote on the amendment.
Is there any objection?
Any, any objection to the primary amendment?
I object.
Get the members in the room to go ahead and vote. Assemblymember Tu? Assemblymember Bernier? Assemblymember Yunt?
No.
Coming back to Assemblymember Tu?
No. Hear me?
I did, thank you. It failed with Assemblymember McKee, Hale, and Nours in support.
Okay, now we're back to the main motion of adopting ordinance 22-029 as amended. Yes, Deputy Mayor.
Madam Mayor, I move to amend ordinance 22-029 by re-substituting the original ordinance and then amending it by amending subsection D on page 5 of the ordinance to add the word additional to read as follows. "The annual adjustment to the additional exemption in this section shall be based on a third quarter report of the Housing Price Index for the Anchorage MSA as determined by the Federal Housing Finance Agency. Such adjustment is the percent change from the prior year to the current year. The adjustment will be effective January 1st of each following year. And to amend the ballot language to conform to the amendment, to insert the words optional portion to read as follows, and provide that the optional portion of the exemption..." And this effectively would exclude the mandatory part of the exemption from the inflation adjuster, the 150,000, but would apply the previously existing inflation adjuster just to the optional part, which is the borough's part, so, yeah.
Okay, so do you have that for the clerk?
Yeah, so, motion to substitute the ordinance with the original ordinance as proposed, and then make these amendments to the original ordinance.
You have a substitute ordinance, correct?
Yep, right here. You want me to read it?
Well, remember, you only moved to go to 11 o'clock.
Okay, I move to table ordinance 22-029 and take it back up after introductions.
And take it up after what?
After introductions.
Oh, after introductions.
At this meeting, after introductions.
So basically, he's moving to postpone it until after introductions, or else you might not be able to take it back off the table if you put it on the table. You have to actually move to take it off the table. So after introductions, is that correct?
Discussion on the motion to move it to, and introductions are talking about the introductions on the agenda, okay?
Having trouble understanding what is being proposed, and I don't know why we're asking to delay this until after introductions, though.
Go ahead, sir.
If I might, we, it seems like there may be extensive further debate on this, and we have some very important introductions that need to occur. So I just want to make sure that we do those first, and then we can continue debating.
Okay. Further discussion on the motion to postpone after the introductions. The discussion is on that. Did you hear what the deputy mayor said? Because there are certain introductions that need to be done at this meeting.
So if the introductions go beyond 11, then we just extend it to midnight? Or do we do it till the next meeting, or what?
Three minutes.
Yeah. The clerk is saying the introductions take about three minutes. Okay. Further discussion on the motion to postpone until after introductions on our agenda. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, then the motion passes. So Madam Clerk, then I guess we will jump to introductions, please.
Introduction for public hearing on May 3rd is ordinance 22-049 with accompanying resolution 22-039, ordinance 22-50 with accompanying resolution 22-41, ordinance 22-052, ordinance 22-055 with the accompanying resolution 22-042, ordinance 22-056, and for public hearing on April 26th, April 28th, and May 2nd is ordinance 22-022.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
I move to introduce the legislation as read into the record by the clerk and set the public hearings for April 26th, April 28th, May 2nd, and May 3rd, respectively.
Okay. Discussion on his motion. The introductions, is there any objection? Then the introductions pass. Okay, now we're back to unfinished business. So there was a motion to substitute, right, that was on the floor. Yes, go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Point of order, Madam Mayor, I think we have to move to take it off the table, or do we just?
Through the mayor to Assemblymember Sumner, I didn't say clarified you meant to postpone, correct? That's how I wrote it.
So now we're back to unfinished, and we have a substitute.
Yeah, so.
For us. And should we take a break so everybody can get a copy of that? Or how, Madam Clerk, how should we handle this?
Madam Mayor, everybody has a copy of this. What's being taken away are the amendments that were made tonight. So everybody already has a copy of this.
Oh, so, I thought he said a substitute ordinance.
He's substituting the original ordinance.
Oh.
Minus all the amendments. And I'm trying to think if that's in order or not, Ms. Madam Mayor.
Okay, all righty, go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Madam Mayor, what I'm doing is I'm substituting the original ordinance, and then I'm amending it so that the housing index adjuster only applies to the optional part. So we already amended this ordinance and removed the housing index adjuster, but I'm proposing that we put it back, but apply it only to the part that's within the borough's control, so only the optional part of the deduction.
So that includes the ballot proposition, the wording on the ballot proposition?
The ballot proposition?
Yeah.
Oh, the language? Yeah.
That's an amendment. Assemblyperson Nowers?
So we just spent a half an hour doing something you want to undo it, is how I'm taking that?
Well, if I may, I had an amendment that I was going to offer. You offered yours first, and now I'm moving mine. I could have moved mine first, and then you could have moved yours. But simply because another Assemblymember moved their amendment first doesn't preclude me from having the chance to offer my amendment as well.
Go ahead, Assemblyperson Nowers.
I think we could have had this debate on whether, on those amendments that, I think we could have had this debate 15 minutes ago on whether we should eliminate that or offer an amendment to have a hybrid. I guess I'm not willing to go back. I think we got some good language and a good proposal in front of us to send to the voters. So I'm not willing to reset the clock to 9:30 and go over this all again.
Is everybody? It's past 10 o'clock, everybody. So, any of the assembly people online have questions about where we are? What you need further explanation on anything?
No, this is Assemblymember Yount. I'm on the same page as everybody there.
All righty. Okay, so any further discussion? We're ready to vote. Okay, Madam Clerk?
I can go ahead and get the people in the room to vote, the members in the room to vote. Assemblymember Yount.
Yes.
Assemblymember Two.
Yes.
Assemblymember Bernier. Assemblymember Bernier.
Hello?
Excuse me, I didn't hear a word. What did you just say, Assemblymember Bernier?
Yes.
It passed with Assemblymember Hale, and Nowers opposed.
Deputy Mayor?
So Madam Mayor, I think I need to now amend the ballot language. So I move to amend the ballot language to read as follows. "Increasing the Matsui Borough Senior Disabled Veteran Residential Owner Occupied Property Optional Tax Exemption from $68,000 to $114,000 of assessed value for the total exemption of $264,000." The Matanuska, and then it shall read, "The Matanuska Sit in a Borough currently provides an optional real property tax exemption of $68,000 on assessed value that is in addition to the state-required $150,000 of assessed value of real property owned and occupied as a permanent place of abode of a resident who is 65 years of age or older, to a disabled veteran, including a person who is disabled in the line of duty while serving in the Alaska Territorial Guard, or three, at least 60 years old, and a widow or widower of a person who is qualified for an exemption. This exemption applies in addition to any other exemption applicable to the property. Currently, the total of the exemptions is $218,000. The Matanuska Sit in a Borough proposes to increase the optional exemption from $68,000 to $114,000 for a total exemption of $264,000, and provide that the exemption will be adjusted annually based upon the percentage change in the Federal Housing Price Index. And then should this ordinance become law, yes or no?"
E. You want to speak further to your amendment then, sir?
No, I mean, so it changes the ballot language to the way we amended it before as we amended the ordinance. Oh, well, we can do that as a secondary amendment.
E. Discussion on his amendment.
I guess I'll offer the secondary amendment to add to the end of that. End of the ballot language. The estimated cost of this exemption in the first year exceeds 2.9 million.
Okay, now we're on the secondary amendment. Discussion on the secondary amendment. Deputy Mayor.
Actually, no, not on the secondary, sorry.
Okay. Further discussion on the secondary amendment. Is there any objection to the secondary amendment? Hearing none on the secondary amendment. I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor, did you have objection to the secondary amendment? No, okay. So the secondary amendment has been approved, so Deputy Mayor?
Madam Mayor, I did forget to add, in the second paragraph, should read, "The Matanuska Sit in a," as I move a secondary amendment to have it read, "The Matanuska Sit in a Borough proposes to increase the optional exemption from $68,000 to $114,000 for a total exemption of $264,000, and provide that the," and this is the change, "adding optional portion of the exemption will be adjusted annually based upon the percent in yada, yada, yada." So adding the words optional portion between that and the, and preceding exemption in the second paragraph. And that makes it match the amendment to the ordinance that we just did.
And provide that the optional portion of exemption?
That the optional portion of the exemption.
Good discussion on that. Yes, Assemblyperson Hale?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just going to say, you know, if we don't adopt this, then the language that goes on the ballot doesn't match the language that we just put in the ordinance, so.
Assemblyperson McKee?
You're not stating a value of the optional portion, you're just, is the optional portion the $68,000? The $114,000, the 114, okay.
Further discussion on the secondary amendment. Is there any objection to passing the secondary amendment? Then we're back then to the primary amendment. Any objection to passing the primary amendment? Now we're back to ordinance 22-029 as amended. Discussion. Yes.
We're on the main motion.
Yeah. Yep.
Am I on?
Mm-hmm.
I'm just going to go back to what I said before, that rich folks probably don't need this. And I think it should be needs-based. I just don't see any, to me, it's absurd to do something that isn't needs-based because you'll have a lower cost to the borough. You'll have a lower burden to the people who are literally going to carry this on their back, the younger people with new families. I just feel that if it isn't needs-based, why are we, why would we not make that distinction? If you don't need it, you shouldn't have it.
It's my understanding that you have to file, don't you, for, to have the exemption? It's not automatic when you're 65, right?
Yeah, but who's going to pass up $114,000 bucks? I mean, people generally aren't going to do that. I think there should be, if you need it, you get it, you don't need it, you don't get it.
Well, that's a whole different subject. Needs-based is, you don't even want to think about what you'd need to do. You want to look at everybody's tax return? Is that what you want?
I don't know, you have to prove what you need.
Boy, that's a rough road lady to go down.
Well, I'm just thinking, we have to prove, you know, when we do our taxes or anything else, or get a bank loan or anything else, we have to provide all kinds of documentation, supporting documentation. I don't think it would be that much if you needed to check somebody's tax forms. Okay, have them attach it or something like that. I don't know, that's, to me, that's pretty much where it stops. If you need it, you get it, you don't need it, you don't get it. And I know I won't hold anybody up any more than that.
Okay, that's fine. Go ahead, Shyne, did you want to say anything?
I don't think I need to now, but I'll let you guys keep talking.
Yeah. Further discussion on the main motion as amended. Is there objection to passing the main motion? Okay, we do have an objection.
I can get the members in the room to vote, please. Assemblymember Two. Assemblymember Two.
Yes, did you say Yount, sorry?
No, I said Assemblymember Two. Assemblymember Bernier.
Yes.
Assemblymember Yount.
Yes.
Assemblymember Two.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, by that time. It passed with Assemblymember McKee opposed.
Okay. So then we will move on to the agency report. Deputy Mayor, you remove the agency report, please.
Yep. I move to confirm the mayor's recommendations as follows. Board of Ethics, Rebecca Debusk. Library Board, resignation of Paige Moore. Local Emergency Planning Committee, resignation of Kathy Watkins. Taquita FSA number 24, resignation of Ken Farina. Big Lake RSA number 21, Andrew Traxler, Garland Morrison.
Discussion on the vacancy report. Is there any objection? Okay, if none, then the vacancy report is approved. We are now under other new business, and we do have some, right, Madam Clerk?
We do. It's ordinance 22-025, an ordinance enacting a lifetime limit of two-year, excuse me, of two terms for the Office of Borough Assembly, allowing any current Assembly members in their first term the opportunity to seek one additional term in submitting the question to the qualified voters at the next regular, regular or special election. This was passed at the last meeting. However, we have two motions to amend something previously adopted, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Assemblyperson Howers, you're listed first, so do you?
Okay. Okay. I will move an amendment, move to amend ordinance 22-025, which was previously adopted on March 15, 2022, in MSB 2.12.020B, by inserting a new first sentence in the ballot language to read, "Borough code currently limits a person serving as," I got the right one, oh yeah, "serving as an Assembly member to no more than two consecutive full terms, but does not restrict the total number of terms a person can serve in their lifetime." And I can speak briefly to this.
Mm-hmm.
This is the same language that we adopted on the ballot measure going before the, on the mayor position. This would just make it clear again to voters what the existing rules are and what they are voting on in terms of changing that.
Is there any objection to the amendment? Hearing none, then that amendment passes. And Assemblyperson Hale, you had?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I moved to amend ordinance 22-025, which was previously adopted March 15, 2022, in MSB 2.12.020B, by inserting the words "in their first term" to read, "B, no person shall hold the Office of Borough Assembly for more than two terms for life. For purposes of this section, service for more than one half of a term is considered a full term. This limitation applies to all former and current Assembly members, except that it shall not prevent the current Borough Assembly members in their first term from holding the remainder of their term and serve one additional full term." I'd like to speak to it briefly if I could. So, ah, when we were looking at this on March 15, it was like 11:30 at night or something like that. I'd been on the slope for about five weeks straight, and I was pretty much a zombie. I misunderstood what, what Mr. Sumner's amendment would do by removing those, that language, and, and voted for, to remove the language. And when I realized later during the discussion that one of the Assembly members would be able to run for three terms, I thought, okay, well, I'll just, you know, I'll just vote to move this along, and then we can reconsider, and maybe we can take that portion back out again. But there, there was no reconsideration on it, so I'm offering this amendment at this time.
Okay. Question? Yes, Deputy Mayor?
So, it was amended. The amendment was to remove those four words. Removing those four words actually makes the exception to the ordinance the exact same exception that is in the mayoral ordinance, which I think is appropriate. So we're sending the same question with the same exception, and, and it's not like I'm like chomping at the bit to run for three terms. I sincerely doubt that I, I will. But I do think that there's not a reason, that I can think of, that you guys would need to create a special exception that would only apply to me when we pass the, the mayoral ordinance with a different exception. So I would encourage people to vote against this amendment, unless you're really just trying to target a certain Assembly member.
Further discussion on the amendment? Yes, Assemblyperson?
My intention is certainly not to target a certain Assembly member. I just made a mistake when I was voting in the first time, and was hoping to correct it on the record.
Okay, further discussion? Yes?
Just a clarifying question on the mayoral ballot language. I don't have that in front of me, but did we make it so the current mayor could run for a third term? Did I get clarification?
That's what I knew of, but maybe you did.
I don't remember doing that.
So it's late again, and of course, these questions are coming up again. The difference is, yes, the mayor can run for another term right now, because under the current rules, you could run for two full consecutive terms.
Right.
Take a break, and then run for another term. And as we all know, the mayor did serve a term in 19...
Yeah, in 1982. I didn't serve a full term, about three-fourths of a term, and then I went to Senate.
So in that regard, yes, she can serve, the mayor could serve one additional term.
Okay, correct. And, and that was my memory, that everybody's in their first term, except for Mr. Sumner, who's in his second term. And so everybody can do the regular kind of two terms, even though you've had an additional term, but there's been a break between. The thing I didn't...
Yeah, a big one.
The thing I don't like about the amendment is, it does single out, and it's, I mean, I do like about this amendment is the previous one singled out in a, a single Assembly member. It made it so only one person, Jesse Sumner, could run for three terms, and I don't like Jesse. I don't know if he's that much of a glutton for punishment, but you, you propose legislation that benefits only one person in this borough, yourself, and, and then it passed, and I'm not sure you thought about it that way when you did it, but that's the effective result of this, is that there'd be only one person in the borough that could run for a third term if this passed. And that would be the first time since term limits, since the, the two-term limit went into effect, which was in the eighties. So I, I do support the amendment, because I think everybody should be on the same playing field, and especially when it comes to elected office.
Yes, Deputy Mayor?
If, if I might, I, I don't know that you could presume that I necessarily would have ran for a second term, knowing that I couldn't run, say, in 20 years. Perhaps my plan was to have a term, and then I want to have a term in 20 years. The, the important thing is that there's a special exception in the mayoral ordinance that I think should be matched in the Assembly ordinance. And to say that just because it only applies to me, I, I'm just asking that we have the same wording in both ordinances. I mean, they're both going to the ballot. Why, because I happen to be in my second term, you want to modify the ordinance to preclude the exception that is the same one that's in the mayor? So, I mean, I, I would just encourage everybody to vote against this, and I call the question.
Any objection to the calling of the question?
I object.
You object? Okay.
Ready for the...
A clarifying question.
If I can get the members in the room to go ahead and vote on calling the question. Assemblymember Two?
Yes.
Assemblymember Bernier?
Let's have a...
Assemblymember Bernier?
Yes.
Assemblymember Yount? It passed with Assemblymember McKee, and now we're opposed.
Okay, so now we are back to voting on, was that a primary or secondary amendment?
It's a, it's an amendment to an ordinance, correct?
Okay, just an amendment to the ordinance.
And I...
Is there any objection to passing the amendment to the ordinance? Yeah, okay. All righty, so Madam Clerk?
If I can get the members in the room to go ahead and vote on the amendment?
This is on the amendment that was made by Assemblyperson Hale.
Assemblymember Bernier? I'm on Bernier. Assemblymember Yount? Assemblymember Two?
No.
I got Assemblymember Sumner and McKee, Yount, and two opposed. I don't have Bernier voting, and Assemblymember Hale and Howers in support, so it has failed.
Can you hear me?
We just called the vote, Assemblymember Bernier. How are you going to vote?
Can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Say it again. No.
So it failed with Assemblymember Hale and Howers in support.
Okay. So let's, so now we're back on the main, that's...
Nope, main motion was already taken.
Okay. All righty, so we do not have any referrals. There are no reconsiderations, so now we're ready for Assembly, staff, and mayor comments. Mike, parting comments, sir?
I do want to say thanks to Nancy Cameron. I know she's not here now, but this was her last Assembly meeting. You might see her again, because she had one action in the wind, but she has done a remarkable job for many, many years for the borough in general, and I think she's done also a remarkable job, the way she just interacts with the public and the care that she's given to the Assembly over many, many years. So I just wanted to put it on the record that I appreciate her service to the borough, and she will be missed for sure. Thank you.
Do we normally do anything? Does the, has the Assembly in the past, or the mayor, anything, done any kind of proclamation, say if they've worked here for, you know, 20, 25, 30 years? Is that, or I guess we can talk about it tomorrow. Right? Yeah, yeah. So, Mr. Attorney, staff comments?
I echo those sentiments. Nancy Cameron, I've worked with her, she was here when I got here in 2005, and diligent, thoughtful, smart, always followed through, so she's going to be, there'll be a hole to fill over there in that department, so.
Okay, good.
Have a good night, everyone.
Madam Clerk, do you have comments? No? Okay. Assembly, I'll go to the people online, please, for your comments. Assemblyperson Two, any parting comments, sir?
I want to thank you, Mayor, for pointing the other two people to the RSA in Big Lake. We're really excited to have a five-member board. We're hoping to do a lot of good work for the community, and a good meeting, and thank you.
Assemblyperson Yount?
Yes, ma'am. A couple of things. It, and I texted the clerk, it, the system was cutting us off. I think both of the other online members tonight would say this. There would be moments where it would just go blank, and it started to happen more as the meeting went on, quite a bit of there at the end. I was getting very confused, it was hard to hear, and I apologize that I had to step in there and ask if anybody could hear me, but I hadn't been able to hear anything for probably, I'd say probably 30, 40 seconds, and so I don't know if that was happening to the other two at all as well, but maybe it's something we could look into with the staff there. Lastly, I just want to say thank you to everybody that was okay with moving one of our budget meetings from May 5 to May 4. There'd be, you know, 14, probably 12, 14 hundred kids at the state tournament, and I think our club will probably have about 80 of those there, and, and it, it's a very hectic day and weekend, and, and we've only got a few coaches. So I am grateful to everyone for allowing us to bump that forward a day. Thank you very much, enjoy your evening.
Assemblyperson Bernier?
Thank you for a good meeting, and God bless everyone.
Okay. Assemblyperson McKee, comments? No. Assemblyperson Hale?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to reiterate that the amendment I offered tonight was not in any way personal against the Assemblymember Sumner. I just, it was very late when we originally voted on that amendment. I misunderstood what it meant, and I wanted to correct that vote. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Assemblyperson Howers?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate the thanks to Ms. Cameron. I haven't worked with her very long, but you can tell she's one of those people that just knows all the ins and outs and can move projects along. And then I just want to speak to the, the idea of needs-based for the senior disabled veteran thing, and I just, you know, I've heard people say that, but the bureaucracy, you'd have to set up to test that, and then people would have to supply all that information. And I think about the people who most need it would be the least likely to want to, able to provide that information. So the only thing I thought about with need-based was like the, the property value, you know, if you've got a $500,000 home, maybe you shouldn't be getting this exemption, but something that would be simple, because I agree with the mayor, it can get complicated in a hurry, and I, I don't, you can spend more money testing than you're giving out, and that's not the goal, so. And I'm thankful that we, we have some sunlight these days, and we're done before 11.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, good meeting. Glad we're out before 11. As far as needs-based testing on the property tax exemption, I don't think that state statute allows that. I mean, there's a, there, there's a hardship exemption that the Matsu Borough offers, but I think that that's an entirely separate thing, and so I, I don't think we could attach a need, a hardship exemption, or hardship requirement to the senior and disabled veteran exemption, certainly not to the state mandatory part. So, in that, in that balance, I think that what we did here is probably a good thing. You are going to give an a tax break to some folks that, that probably really don't need it, like my, my folks, but there, there's a lot of folks that, you know, they really do need it. And that's not to say, you know, I mean, a lot of working families and whatnot, the taxes aren't easy for them either. They're not, not easy for a lot of people, but, you know, I think it's an important commitment to members of our community. They've given a lot, and we're giving a little bit back, so, thanks.
Okay. And the only comments that I have is, when we adopted the Road Task Force, there was a section in there where I, I am responsible for appointing the chairman and the vice chairman, and so I want to put that on the record tonight. Pat Daniels will be the chairman, and Gary Foster will be the vice chairman. And with that, meeting adjourned at 10:45. Thank you, everybody.